Yeah, it's unlocked.
Call meeting of the Monday, April twenty first, City Council, what session to order, the clerk please call the roll.
Josh, remember Sheldon?
Here.
Brackman?
Here.
Kennedy? Reynolds?
Rosa.
Dolfsner?
Here.
Fonte, Leo?
Here.
DeBussa?
Here.
Russell?
Here.
And President.
Here, thank you. Well, this town will give people a chance to speak to the councils, anybody here like to address the council? If you'd like to speak, please leave your name and address and women's remarks to five minutes, did you ask anything? Just, it's pretty much.
I'm just spectating, but I definitely appreciate everyone's time.
Okay, thank you. Seeing nobody else, we'll move on, Billy, you wanna do some housing?
Uh, before you, there are, or should be a packet that Mary Maxwell put together for all of us from Jamestown Residents Corporation. Uh, she did a pretty detailed job of what they've done in the past and how much money that they appropriated for some of these neighborhoods that are clustered together to improve their neighborhoods. Did she get enough for everybody you know, Crystal?
Absolutely not.
Is there any other?
There's the next one here.
Here's the folder that was laying here with a bunch of them.
Well, no, I think that is the packet.
That is the good of your packet.
Yeah, she brought some for the media.
Maybe she took it with her, I don't know.
Jeff got about twenty of the things.
Is that what you're talking about?
Now, well, the thing for us, our dialogue right now, it's uh, it's just a one-page and it's dated April twenty first. She went through an explanation of the Remisant Block Challenge Program and how it started back in two thousand eleven when she was first here and she's the only person assigned to this, uh, this work. And handed out a cluster map, so there are maps available from her office. I'm guessing we could get them online as well. And um, it's dollar-for-dollar match, you probably heard the sales pitch before, up to three thousand dollars. So if a homeowner spends six thousand on a project, then by all means, hopefully it can get reimbursed for up to half of that, which would be three thousand. To date, there's been sixty groups, over seven hundred and twenty-five property owners and over two million dollars has been invested. Going forward, she's singled out four different areas, two of them were up and getting and running and two were future use. The Allen Park area, the South Side's got two hundred and fifty-nine homes. North Side Buffalo Street to Sixth Street is in Phase Two, I believe. And so other phases will come online. Uh, she also had a handout for some of the sponsors that are funding this program. Malinay Foundation, Sheldon Foundation, Chautauqua Regional Community Foundation and many other local businesses that are listed in that handout. Uh, the North Side Target area, um, it's huge, at least when it was populated by, um, somebody that came in and appraised all the neighbors of fifteen hundred programs. And she told the folks that are helping to put this together, she tried to do three hundred a year for the next five sections. Quite interesting, the color coding, uh, that was done in the appraisal, um, from homes that should be torn down to homes that are pristine. So it's kind of an interesting map to look at. Total investment for the North Side is netted five hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. A property owner investment of over sixty-five percent and a JRC investment of around thirty-five percent. So, um, she was very pleased. For the next phase, a hundred and twenty-seven homes have signed up for it. And, um, so she's hoping to get the Phase Two more concrete and up, up to speed along with getting ready to do a, a third area of that North Side. It's quite informative, um, she's opened up her office to any questions and help if anybody has any further questions from Mary Maxwell. Also, Crystal reported on a couple of projects that are coming up, some neighborhood stuff happening. Hands-on Neighborhood is May seventeenth, it starts at eight, ends around noon time. Registration's open and, um, so you can certainly participate in that on the seventeenth. Also on the seventeenth, uh, through the help and work of the folks that are redoing our comprehensive plan, they're having a South Side walkabout and that starts around ten, um, for, for the group to go around on that. She hopes to hear by May twelfth, uh, the HUD formula, the new formulary is coming out to hopefully share with us what our future funding might be. And then, uh, at the end of this month, uh, April thirtieth, starting at ten at Wickerborn's at Washington Third, there's a developer symposium to help showcase the city and, uh, bring folks in that will hopefully have an interest in the future of our city. Contractors, politicians, investors, real estate bankers and the like to have, uh, have a, I don't wanna say a free-for-all, but have good dialogue on sharing and networking, uh, what, what we might be able to do to make a difference in our city. Uh, other than that, that was it for housing.
Any questions? You guys can take your little score sheets and keep this for your own houses. That's interesting. Very good. Good work. Good compliments and particularly my neighborhoods that are involved with this right now. Very happy with that. Brent, on finance?
Thank you, Mr. President, that is our full agenda. First was bond resolution dated April twenty eighth, twenty twenty-five. Authorized the issuance of up to one point six five million dollars in aggregate principal amount serial bonds in the city of Jamestown, New York. We're seeing the local finance law, the finance cost of construction, reconstruction improvement of certain facilities of the Board of Public Utilities, including improvements to the wastewater treatment plant and construction of new gas lines, like diesel, rebuilding station in the city of Jamestown. This is a huge share of the project, it's gonna be, we've already authorized five hundred thousand dollars in ARPA funds in the city's end. This bond resolution was approved. Number two is another bond resolution dated April twenty first, twenty twenty-five. Twenty-seven million, six hundred forty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-seven in active principal amounts. Serial bonds in the city of Jamestown, New York. The finance law, finance cost of construction of new pump house station. This is something that, uh, David Leathers spoke to us about, two weeks ago he was here. Reconstructing pump house, a new tank for raw water. Construction of hydrochloride generation station for chlorination and generator of service. They're actually gonna be working in two new water transition mains, I think it's thirty-six inches and it's two and four. Mayor, we did have a question, um, Tony didn't remember, the VPU, if they talked about trying to apply for any grants or anything, and I was hoping to go and replace a bunch of water mains and get some grant funding.
They apply for grants all the time, so I'm sure if they aren't available, they will.
They, we didn't, they never came up.
Didn't come up, yes.
They work with Paula all the time, so, she's always looking.
Sure. So we can get those grants and the bond amount will be smaller as hope. That resolution was approved. That's the resolution, if the mayor was authorized, excuse me, grant with our petty concrete expedite in New York for street reconstruction twenty twenty-five, Hall Avenue from, uh, the Harding Avenue. Flatwork, curb, interantend, brick replacement. Fun stuff here, construction preparation for total bid amount of two hundred and thirty, three thousand eight hundred dollars and cents. This project will be funded through CHIPS money. They were the only bidder on this project, but we're pretty much out of it. Reasonable. That was approved. Next is spending the hiring freeze and filling composition due to essential nature of one principal engineering aid in the garden public works. Position is vacant as a result of a recent employee resignation. That was approved. Five, it's all the mayor has authorized, it's been agreed with Ellis Stack Incorporated, Castile, New York, both composite decking accessories for Great Point. Reconstruction down there, the total bid amount of fifty-one thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars and eighty-five cents. This project will be funded through ARPA funds.
Is, is that correct, Mayor?
Are there still had some off over?
Yes, Chad, to the Chadwick River Basin.
Chadwick River Basin.
The funding that he set aside, so this counts towards our match and, um, all of the state funding that we have on that project we have going on right now.
Thank you. Six is a chance for Jamestown City Code Section two nineteen dash nine B. Some questions on this, um, referred to the corporation counsel after we had discussed this and he had not seen this before, he would suggest some editing on this.
I think it's written wrong. Crystal, do you, do you have a copy of it? The supporting resolution is different than what made none of that.
It's written two different ways.
So two nineteen B shall be removed. And it is a little different than two nineteen dash nine F.
Okay.
It's just to clarify, it's a really, really simple change, it almost seems like it shouldn't matter, but in the eyes of the judge and the way that he looks at it, he's recommended this change.
Okay.
So it's a really simple thing, but it's, in order for it to be prosecuted the way it needs to be, we had to, we have to do it.
Gotcha. Or yeah, the staff report said it must be up to the code enforcement officers discretion to bring the owner offender into court and I don't know if that was like a, just touched wrong, but if that's what they recommended, it makes sense then.
Uh, well, and, yes, but that's based on their observation.
Okay.
So if they comply, then the code enforcement officer would dismiss the ticket, it's like a fix-it ticket kind of, right?
Right.
So if they comply, the code enforcement officer can dismiss it. If they don't, then they bring it to an appearance.
Okay.
What was it previous to this, Crystal?
It's just the wording was in the, in the two nineteen dash B and then it's moved to two nineteen dash F. Um, and there's, uh, one word I think added, um.
Date.
Date, yes.
Oh, so there's no change in the number of days or the paint or the double?
No, it's just changing where it's located within the ordinance and then adding that word date.
Should make it triple?
Yeah. Well, that's, that is up to the judge against the appearance.
I'll be judged for it.
So is that Judge Lana Kusso who suggested that?
Yes.
Okay, that's the housing court. Right? So that was approved. Um, the next is, um, U-DAG, um, sets of one hundred thousand dollars. Phil Monroe, Monroe and Moore LLC submitted an amended application to the JLDC for a loan of three hundred fifty thousand dollars for jobs in private investment program, Ture Chu, who's already have a seven hundred twenty-one thousand, four hundred sixty-four dollar project. Purchased equipment and machinery for purposes of expanding business capabilities and services. And Mr. Monroe is here today, if anybody has any questions for him, he appeared before the JLDC last week and the JLDC did approve this.
Do you wanna talk? Do you wanna say anything or you just want questions?
Yeah. I, I also wanted to show in just in case anybody wanted to, to reach out with any questions or concern based on what we wanna use the fund for. I think that we all have the same goal with, with what we're trying to do, um, with the business and with the equipment in the city of Jamestown, so, um, if, if there's any questions about how we plan to roll it out or utilize the funds, we're more than, more than willing to, to speak to that.
I, positive, I, Gleyber did this, I mean, it was, will you give him for it? Will you, you give, no question?
We're getting a dump truck, uh, a dump truck for the demolition. Uh, we're gonna try, we're going to get a gutter machine and a spray foam insulation rig, uh, with the funds. So during our discussion with the JLDC, we, we found two areas of our current service, um, list that we could, uh, they're kind of bottlenecks in our services currently and, uh, about sixty percent of the services that we are requested that we don't provide, which is gutter repair and installation and spray foam insulation. So three out of the four major projects, new build projects we've had, uh, recently have been delayed for more than two weeks due to spray foam insulation contractors, um, whether it be, you know, outsourced through Rochester or, or, um, just lack of professionalism. So our goal at Monroe and Moore is to try and, uh, bring all of the services within so that we can control the complete construction process, so that we can provide our customers with, with, uh, a, a margin that's, that's fair. So the less we have to subcontract out, the more we can, you know, we can play with our numbers, we can.
Did you say a gutter machine, is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Isn't that for, for curbs, you said?
No, gutter is like, uh, aluminum gr- like.
Oh, most metal.
Straw, yeah, gutters.
I was thinking of the bricks and cement, okay.
On the demolition side of things, uh, we, we bid on three projects recently, uh, through the land bank and we lost all three. We were in the middle of the pack on the first two and we were way above the pack, um, on the last one. And, uh, the only way, the, the only way that we can bring our prop, our margins down, that thirty percent that we seem to be over, is to control the, the dump process. So right now we subcontract out all our dumpsters, um, so we're paying a lease fee on the dumpsters and then a dump fee at the dump. So if we can eliminate that dumps fee, we can mark our margins and hopefully win these bids.
We'd be a good customer, probably.
Very good.
As, as far as demoing, um, one problem that I, I think that the city's encountered is that, um, you know, we're grateful for, uh, some of the local businesses, uh, that have been doing demos for us, but it's, it's kind of a side job to them because their, their primary goal is jobs or, or, or other things and this is kind of a side hustle, if you will, for them. So they're only available certain times of the year. The question I guess I have for you is, uh, with this extra equipment, would you be available to be doing demos year-round if we needed?
So, I don't wanna speak down on the current contractors because I don't know their operation, but I do know that, uh, they are doing, they're doing other things outside of, of what, you know, the demolition contract is. So are we, we're builders, but we don't, we don't utilize our equipment for anything other than demolition or foundation and which is hand-in-hand. So if, uh, we, take for instance the bid that we just lost, um, if we had won that, we would have been mobilized within two weeks. With the dump truck, we would have been mobilized even faster because we have to give the dumpster companies a heads up, within a week or two for their dumpsters. So if we have the truck, we can mobilize as soon as we are awarded the, the contract.
What size truck are you talking about?
So we're looking at a.
Tandem, a tandem or?
We're looking at a dump truck, a full-size tandem dump truck and a Chevy sixty-five hundred, which is the biggest size that you can get before a CDL. And why we're looking at that is, uh, we don't wanna run into a challenge of trying to find a qualified CDL operator to hire full-time. So if we can operate, you know, then that, that size, um, that size truck can do twenty-nine thousand five hundred, or I'm sorry, twenty-three thousand five hundred pounds of GBW, uh, twenty-six thousand is the, is the weight before you have to get a CDL. So if, if we can operate right under that weight and not have to hire a CDL driver, that's what we'll do until we can find a qualified individual for a CDL truck, sized truck.
I was gonna say, it's, it's a good idea to have someone available, but just answer that. You can get someone with a CDL.
Yes, very hard to find a CDL operator right now.
Most of them are working somewhere else.
Correct.
Any other question?
Just for the bid pass, our committee, uh, because it's over a hundred thousand, we'll have to be voting at the, at the voting session.
Next item, uh, it's also the mayor, Marcus from E, at the Department of Public Works. Mayor by authorized purchase of Streets Division, Department of Public Works, and Bill Basil, from Southern A, to New York. Could be backing up Erie County contract, one four zero zero five nine zero zero. Capital account, twenty twenty-five Silverado, three fifty, four-wheel drive, regular cab, work truck. Workplace PPW, launch pow, wow, number sixty-one. For total amount, not to exceed sixty-nine thousand, four hundred sixty-four dollars. That was approved. Next, uh, it's also the mayor, Deputy Fire Chief from, you know, Fire Maddox Supply Company Incorporated in Churchill, New York. Purchase of thirty-two MSA Model Three One Self-contained Breathing Apparatus, associated equipment for total amount not to exceed three hundred twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred forty-four dollars and twenty-two cents. Transition of a fiscal year assistance to firefighters grant. This is a FEMA grant that we're awarded and we're praying for that. That was approved. Next, resolve the mayor and everybody's authorized and directed to enter contract agreement on Stan Tech Incorporated for the drafting and delivery of Safe Streets for All SS Four A Action Plan for the city of Jamestown. Utilizing federal highway administration funds that amount not to exceed two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. Part of the Vision Zero Plan, that was approved, was that four years ago, something like that? That was approved. Next, resolve that the Deputy Public Works, the Department of Public Works, survey, uh, Oakwood Village, Ohio. Have our solar slip lighting services for work on the city storm store. Could be backing up in Erie County, New York, and surveying for cost not to exceed one hundred forty thousand dollars. Mark, was this a budgeted item?
Yeah, so this has been in the budget for the last few years. We tried to get this thing contracted in town last year, but our project wasn't big enough. Um, so we're going to work with, um, the VPU as far as scheduling and we're gonna do both projects at the same time.
That was approved. Next, uh, it's also the mayor has authorized entered execute an agreement with Esteban Construction of New York. Street construction twenty twenty-five, put in street from Wester, four plus four streets. Things, coal line, asphalt, dumpster, wet work. Total bid amount of one hundred twenty-one thousand, five hundred thirty-six dollars and fifty cents. Uh, this is, project will be funded through CHIPS funds. Esteban was the lowest of two bidders. That was approved. Resolve the mayor, Deputy Fire Chief authorized after the agreement with Appliance Lawn Resources, Cape, New York, for purchase of one Unimac UC Series sixty-pound washer slash extractor and one Unimac PPE drying cabinet and associated utility upgrades. For total amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand, four hundred eighty-seven dollars and forty cents. For the population council form. Fire station number one, uh, Spring Street, and fire station five, one ninety-five, Chairman Avenue. This is a store in Boston, EPA funding from the Crawford Fire Fund, I'm mistaken, this is what the money is. Thanks for this.
Yes, that is my, and our thanks from the fire department to the Department of the Law. They were, they were just through this grant funding. Well, great gracious to allow the fire department to utilize those funds to purchase some new communication. Thank you.
Thank you for what you do. It's a group effort.
That resolution's approved. And finally, um, Soup Co. Corporation has agreed to donate all materials and manpower required to perform crack ceiling and micro painting, soapbox, duty track, the city of Jamestown. Plus the heatproofing cart, valued at four thousand dollars. City of Jamestown, hereby accept the donation and be resolved with this Jamestown City Council. Hereby extend its appreciation and gratitude on behalf of the city of Jamestown and all those kids who ride their soapbox, their dirty cars. Soup Co. Corporation for their generous donation. Mistaken, this, this work should be done before the next soapbox, where we need it, is that in June, I believe?
That's, that's, does it happen before the, yes.
Wait, no, it's feet of their kindness. That motion was approved. Well, we had from finance. Quite a bit.
Thank you. Public safety, Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. President, we had four resolutions, uh, they all appear in finance, so I've, uh, lost them. The first one was for the thirty-two MSA Model G One Self-contained Breathing Apparatus, uh, for the fire department not to exceed three hundred twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred forty-four dollars and twenty-two cents. And, I don't know, if you wanna just jump in, uh, chief, and just, uh, brief everyone what you told us as far as the lifespan of them and, um.
So everyone, uh, we've had a longstanding relationship with mine safety appliances, it's MSA, it's actually a company named Shorten Two. We use their equipment for self-contained breathing apparatus for over forty years. We did former committee once the grant funds were awarded last year to do some research and ultimately we landed where we feel the MSA is still gonna be the appropriate solution for us. Uh, this will be a fewer number of air packs than the fire department has had in the past since we do not outfit as much frontline equipment as we once did, we did drop engine a couple of years ago. So how this will work is there'll be a brand new air pack in a receiving position of all the firefighting apparatus that we have downstairs. Each air pack comes with a, uh, two, um, air cylinders, two ladders. And they're running a special right now, but we'll be getting additional ladders that will be coming with them as well for our reserve inventory. Each air pack also comes with its own face piece, each member is fit tested to wear a specific size for that and the grant also allows for additional face pieces to be purchased, so every member of the fire department will have their own face piece that will be up to them when they take. NFA standard nineteen eighty-one, uh, outlines the timeline, how long air packs are good for. They have a fifteen-year lifespan, so our current packs are coming through, they'll all be outdated by December thirty-first of twenty-six. This grant is very timely for us. With this purchase, so the loan is council approved of, it will pay us off by the twenty-fourth of four we'll have to consider replacing that. Any questions?
Thank you, chief, uh, that passed, the second resolution, um, was for the, uh, drafting and delivery of Safe Streets, uh, action plan for city of Jamestown, um, for the amount of two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, also on finance and that passed. The third, third resolution, uh, was for the deputy fire chief, uh, to be authorized to purchase the Unimac UC Series sixty-pound washer extractor and one Unimac PPE, uh, drying cabinet associated, uh, and utility upgrades through the total amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand, four hundred eighty-seven dollars and forty cents. And as Brent said, uh. And as Brent said, uh, uh, it's going to be located at, uh, Fire Station One and Fire Station Five. And that passed. The fourth resolution was for the fire investigators, Andrew Crusoe, Ryan Saunders, Jesus Garcia, Emily Webster, and detectives Rex Ku and Courtney Shawman B. And they are hereby authorized to attend the International Association of Arson Investigators Annual Fire Arson Investigation Seminar to be held at the Saratoga Hilton, five thirty-four Broadway, Saratoga Springs, New York, uh, beginning Wednesday, May seventh, twenty twenty-five, including on Friday, May ninth, twenty twenty-five, with fees and expenses paid pursuant to Section seventy-seven Bravo, the general municipal law of the state of New York, and that passed as well. And that's all we had for public safety.
Thank you. Public Works, Randy?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. We had seven resolutions that were all covered in finance. Uh, just to touch on them, it, uh, curved and brickwork on Hall Avenue. Beckfill the engineer position at the, uh, DPW. The other one, it, it, like, was alluded to, put more, all new composite decking down in McCray Point. The decks down there are, uh, they're beginning to be unsafe. They've been patched up over the years, but, um, it's time that they're all get replaced. And, uh, the Parks Department is going to do the installation on that, which is going to save us some money. Uh, the other one is the small dump truck that was mentioned and that is from capital budget from equipment options paid, paid through. The other resolution was, um, going to be some, uh, the city storm sewer, to the tune of a hundred and forty thousand dollars, and that's for sewer slip lining, which means they insert a plastic liner rather than dig up that old corrugated, uh, galvanized piping, which it makes it a lot easier and, uh, cost effective, so. Mark said they're looking forward to utilizing that. And then Clinton Street, um, is getting, uh, basically all curb and gutter work. So, tune of a hundred and twenty-one thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars. And the last one, as Brent mentioned, is the Suit Coat doing the ceiling down at, uh, the racetrack down there. So again, we extend our thanks to them for doing that for us. And the other thing that came into form of an announcement is going to be, uh, Foot Avenue is going to be milled and paved this year by, uh, the contractors CAT Co. And so they're going to grind it and, and pave it from where the bridge ends right there on, uh, Forest Avenue, all the way to the city line. And again, they assume that it's going to be done this year, right, Mark?
Yes. And it's a state project?
Yeah, state bid, state, yeah, yeah. So, so that'll be something else to have that done, that'll be nice. But, uh, other than that, that's all we had in public works.
Thank you. Anything else?
Um, the only thing I will tell everyone here, I know I've communicated with you and I apologize, I don't have a very good voice, but, um, uh, fire chief interviews have started. I know there was discussion last week and I want to make it clear that we've received now twenty-eight resumes and the potential of interviewing up to thirteen. So they will be in the next few weeks. We will keep you apprised as we go through the process, the team. The team consists of Chief Jackson, Deputy Chief Forster, myself, Council President Doltz, Public Safety Chair, Mr. Russell, and two members of the fire department. Ben McLaughlin, who is the union president, and Captain Dan Bowley, so, okay? Um, one item for executive session, I think Elliot, um, who do you need besides Erica? Do you need Tim or?
I've asked Tim, Matt, Eric, and Crystal, Steph.
Okay, um, for contract.
And Joe.
Do we have a motion to run executive session?
No action to be taken, so.